It's no, I don't want to do it, but if we can, because we get more. It's not, I don't think it's an emergency.
Okay, then no.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
There are times when we have to do that though, when there's like a pressing. Like we have to submit a grant at a certain amount of time, or there's like something just happened in a case that we haven't talked about.
I don't. I don't think it constitutes an emergency, so I don't know that I would. That would be wise.
Okay, well, whenever we, I already have. Executive session for the week following our IAC thing. Um, for pending litigation, so if you want to just, if there's a separate issue that we want to, now that we're trying to do a little better job identifying the topics that we're discussing.
What are you sitting in the front row for Sheriff?
Well, I think, I mean. Or it's existing, or, okay. It's a long time.
It is, it is.
But there's also reality that you lawyers do lawyer stuff.
We're gonna be, like, you guys are all I see. And so then, I'm, Louis and I and several other people in our office are going to the prosecutors conference at the same time.
Well, it's, I mean, it's kind of competing like essentially.
Uh, yeah.
Or something like that, so then, in the hotel where the.
Already nine seconds in the campaign. Ain't matters. Morning Sheriff. Twenty-two seconds for his counter. Good morning, Bonner County. It is nine o'clock on January twenty-fourth, and we are here for our two-day morning meeting. Janine Shepherd will open us up with the invitation.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to stop and recognize your presence in this place. We are grateful for the ways you live in our lives and thank you in advance for what you will do here today. First Samuel two-two reminds us, there is none holy like the Lord. There is none beside me. There is no rock like our God. We invite your spirit here today to move in and among what is done here. We ask that you give the commissioners exactly what they need to glorify you with their lives and their role here in Bonner County. Help bring to mind the answers that need to be. That they need to resolve difficult issues. Make it so clear that it is undeniable that you are at work in this meeting in North County. Help the commissioners to fully lean on you, Lord, and not their own understanding. Help them to cling to you in good times and hard times. Make your presence known to them in new ways. Isaiah fifty-seven fifteen says, for thus says the one who is high and lifted up, who inhabits eternity, whose name is holy. I dwell in the high and holy place and also with him, who is a contrite and lowly spirit, to revive the spirit of the lowly and to revive the hearts of the contrite. We lay down our lives for you, Lord, as best as you see fit.
All men's pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, the Constitution under common. And it is well with liberty and justice for all.
Williams.
Yes, sir. I move that we adopt the order of the agenda.
I second the motion.
All right. Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public comment?
Public comment comes before we.
Afterwards.
Before we vote.
Okay. Uh, well, let me think about it. Yeah, go ahead, Dan. Take your name for the record.
Uh, Dan Rose for the record. I, I'm here presenting today and I call attention to some O L M, O M L, open meeting law irregularity. I comment on the Bonner County Ordinance one-two-hundred B. I have previously mentioned this under past administrations at these regular business meetings. The new chair's position, as I read in the reader in the B, is pledged that the B O C C will seek not only conduct a business which is legal, but also moral and just, otherwise lawful. I engaged last week with the executive secretary of the B O C C about a process and procedure of special meeting and workshop business. You know, available at this point. There is a void of information disclosure, closure, in the workshop or special meetings. Processes given the language of B C O, Bonner County Ordinance one-two-hundred B, whose purpose is, quote, to enable citizens with issues or concerns. Which they wish to bring to the board's attention and afford an opportunity for consideration on a future agenda. For possible board action. Further, one-two-hundred B states, questions may be directed to individual board members. For, for the purpose of clarifying issues or to obtain additional information for the purpose of scheduling the matter for a future business meeting. B C O, Bonner County Ordinance one-two-oh-two defines regular meeting as cited. Uh, in B's, Bonner County one-two-hundred B, a regular business meeting of the board shall be weekly on Tuesday commencing at nine AM. That's why we're here today. This is the issue I'm trying to get to here today. Um, all minutes shall be available. To the public within a reasonable period of time after the meeting. Available is a vague term of compliance. It is reasonable to. If it is reasonable to post the minutes for Tuesday regular meeting, business meetings at the website, why are the special meeting minutes not posted at the website? I respectfully request a workshop, special meeting. To further present inquiry and solution related to workshop, special meeting. To be brought back to the, this Tuesday nine AM weekly agenda process. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll submit a copy for the record.
Hey, we got no hands up. Doug, you out there somewhere? Not today. Oh, you're right there. There you are. You want the over five thousand?
Oh, yes.
We're not, we're not there.
So. We're not there yet. I was all ready for you. Okay. I would take a motion for the consent agenda.
Pardon me, Mr. Chairman. According to the agenda that's posted, uh, there is a District Two Commissioner report. I'm not sure it's on just District Three.
So, yeah, he was. We were supposed to give public before we did that, but so you already voted, so we can move on to most section. Okay, so my, we can review first January sixteenth through January twentieth. So today we're doing an actual workshop on the hazardous areas and special sites areas. Uh, and been requested by planning and that'll be downstairs following this meeting. It is one where community input is being requested because people had a concern that they weren't able to give input on those specific topics. On January nineteenth, we had a commissioner meeting with the Panhandle Health. They gave us some updates about the services that they provide. We do had, we did have a groomer meeting last Friday, and I'm actually going to let the manager of our groomer give us a little bit of an update of what took place at that meeting. So Pete will come up and talk about the groomers really quickly.
Okay, I'd have brought a copy if I knew I was going to be presenting, but Pete Hughes, Recreation Manager for the record. Uh, grooming is, is going steady on both the, the east side and the west side, which is Priest Lake. Uh, snow conditions were, were excellent and deep in the beginning of the season. Uh, we experienced a bit of a, a warm-up and some rain events, which, which slowed things down, but we do have a nice base out there and, uh. Right now, currently, we're sitting about ninety-four percent of, of annual snowpack. Um, to, according to the last data I read, and, uh, we're hoping for, of course, for a little bit more snow up in the higher elevations. Um, and we can get back out grooming, uh, on the, on the east side, the Sandpoint groomers, um, we are down a machine. Um, indefinitely, we're waiting for our new replacement machine that, uh, is leased by the state. To show up, and once that gets here, we'll be able to, uh, effectively, uh, cover double the trails that we're doing right now, but. Um, all in all, everything's going well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, so I've had some community inquiries, and there has been one about open, uh, meeting dialogue. I reached out to the Attorney General regarding this issue to give some training to staff and to the community regarding the process of open meeting. To make sure that Bonner County is in compliance. We did receive some feedback on a prior issue under our prior board. And we were offered that education and training, and so hopefully we can get it that scheduled for the community and for employees to make sure that we're following that open meeting. I got a community concern. I'm giving you a follow-up on the vehicles. We did an internal audit on our vehicle use. There was no finding of misuse, but there was a finding that there's room for improvement with our policies and procedures. So risk is going to go and update that, and we'll, we'll have that to present to the community once we update that policy. There was a community concern regarding occupancy notification and the system wherein planning goes and actually inspects. That issue was sent over to legal to review to make sure that we're following process and procedure and that that is correct. We'll give an update on that issue as well. In terms of, um, I wanted to give some clarification on this meeting and executive session because I actually learned something. When this board goes into executive session, typically everybody leaves because we think the meeting's over. And Dave Bowman brought up a question that I felt was a good question and gave clarification. When we go into executive session. And you, we have the option of coming back out of executive session and still discussing it open. So you might not necessarily want to leave just because we go into executive session. Because we could go in executive session and the attorneys could say, this is not executive session, it needs to be open. Then it's open, and then you will all have left. So that's one of the reasons that I think some people want a little bit more information on. What are we talking about in executive session? Because you would know, you probably want to stick around for that. And that might have some, uh, give some clarity to. We're following process and procedure. I think we just all, I to I left after. When they say we're going to executive session, I would just leave the building. So we don't want to do that. Um, on the thirty-first this coming Tuesday, there is no commissioner meeting because we're all gone, so I don't want people to show up accidentally. We'll be in Boise doing the Idaho Association of Counties. As far as next week's agenda, or the next time we have an agenda, one of the things that I want to place on the agenda is to review putting the planning and zoning board back together. Now that we have a hearing commissioner, there's not that much work for zoning, and I think that that would be a better use of time, especially as we're seeing, we don't have a lot of volunteers. And more people are wanting to be involved. Also, when we. Factor in that our director, our planning department is relying on planning and zoning to help update that comp plan. It would be better if we put it back together, and that would give us more volunteers. So that's what I have, um, as an update, and I would just offer that since after I speak, you're going into public comment. If you have an issue or a concern that you want addressed or you want to see on an agenda item, speak up. And I can review that until the board decides whether or not we're going to do an agendizing in open meeting at the board. So I can help in that way, but that's about it for District Two.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
You may. Thanks, sir.
Uh, I appreciate all the conversation about open meeting law and agendizing, and I spent some time last night, and. This is pretty darn fresh, and this is where I get. My information, and I'm also consulting with. Our prosecutor, Mr. Marshall, and I, as of yesterday. And the information that I have in reference to our current practices. From our prosecuting attorney, which is in alignment with Idaho Code seventy-four-two-zero-one. Is that our current practice is what we should be doing. Now, there's room for improvement. But in regards to open meeting law and executive session, I would like to be exceedingly clear that some of the things that we go into executive session about regard personnel. And regardless of whether or not that you work for the county, you, your rights do not end at the county door. And when we go into executive session, we're discussing the personnel matter. There are things that are discussed that are in accordance with state law, for example. Medical issues, personnel issues. And whether you are working for the county now, today, or tomorrow, you are entitled to your rights throughout. As an American. And in regards to lawsuits. Uh, we see, I used to be a teacher. This is my third week, and I think I've been notified of like fifteen-ish lawsuits, and they keep coming. Uh, during my campaign, a lot of people said that they wanted us to be. Effective users and efficient users of the taxpayer dollars. We went to commissioner school. They said, consult your attorney. I have never spent so much time in my life consulting attorneys as I have in the last three weeks, and I found that most of them are pretty nice people. Uh, and I intend to do so because all of this costs the taxpayer money. And that's money that prevents us from doing things. And in regards to the conversation that is being brought forward, that I look forward to having an open about meetings about meetings, I will say that. I look forward to that conversation. Uh, at our last meeting, I brought forward the idea of another meeting amongst the elected officials, and here's the progress on that, and. Is for the county elected officials, and I sent it out this morning. And we need to pick a date. I have asked, uh. The clerk, Mr. Rosedale, to be the chairman, but here's some of the details. This is a general framework that we will modify. And there's going to be two standing agenda items, and what they are is what your prospective department is up to and how we can work together. As elected officials of Bonner County. To better serve our constituents. How we're doing with our budgets, because we spend taxpayer dollars. And, uh, every time that we spend, I know that that comes from our neighbors. The meeting should be open to the public. But there will not be public comment in the interest of time. There will be a rotating chair, and this is the suggestion that I have. It will start with the clerk, the treasurer, the assessor, the prosecutor, the coroner. The sheriff, and then it will be followed by the Board of Commissioners, but it will only be one commissioner at a time. It will not be three. And then we will rinse, wash, and repeat. It'd be monthly meetings. Try to keep the meetings to an hour because. We have jobs to do to serve the residents and the constituents and all the people in Bonner County, and we're growing. And no decisions will be made as the commissioners will be in a quorum, and that is the right way to operate. And finally, what I closed with, and I mean this as a constituent, as a new commissioner, I look forward to working with all of us. There's room for improvement. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, we have an agenda that we're supposed to follow, and so if District Three wants to give a report, it should be on the agenda. When you're talking about something, for example, that Mr. Rose brought up. When you add something on, that's actually adding it on to the agenda and not giving a time for rebuttal in this position, so. In the future, out of respect, I didn't want to interrupt, but in the future, we need that on the agenda because the community has a right to know that he's going to speak. They might have a desire to call him and say, hey, what are you going to talk about, or what are you going to do? We need to follow the agenda and the correct process for this, and I, this is the first I've heard about the email. We. I, that needs to be reviewed because we, I cannot require electives to do anything. I'm not the supervisor of elected, so I don't know that process, so. I don't want to put things out there that may not actually be correct, so if we could follow the agenda.
Guess I'll just withhold my report. Since it's not on the.
It's not on the agenda.
Good. Any public comment? Nobody signed up? Doug, we got over five thousand sheriff's office, some vehicle. We're not there?
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I've moved to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second it.
Okay. Continue on Douglas.
I was commenting on the, uh, consent agenda, so, uh, I will wait. Thank you.
Okay. It's on record. Yeah. The whole, the whole thing's recorded. All right, we had a motion and a second. All in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes, and go ahead, Doug, with your.
Yeah, I'm so sorry. Can I just, just say from the first. So, yeah, what happened here is we, we did, um, we skipped over Commissioner Williams' comment. We went to public comment. So then, uh. Mr. Rose, and there was other public comment, whatever happened there, then, um, Commissioner Almond spoke, so what we need to do now is we need to. Afford that audience an opportunity to make public comments. Maybe regarding what the two commissioners had to say, and then we'll go back and we'll redo the motion for the consent agenda.
Okay.
I think we just need to back up a little bit and get back.
Bill, I was going to ask for. To be done what she suggested, that you res- resubmit this public comment, but I didn't get to comment on because it.
That corrected.
Thank you.
Okay.
So to be clear, the public comment is open regarding what I stated or what Commissioner Almond said. Does anybody have a public comment about those two things? No public comment? Okay, so now we'll move on to approving the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman. Based on the information before us, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second it.
All right. The first and second, motion passes, all in favor. Discussion.
Public comment first, even then we, then we vote.
Yeah. Then we'll vote.
Okay, so, um, invoices over five K EMS in the sheriff's department, could you elaborate on those for me?
Okay, the EMS was engineering on the new building. And then the sheriff's office had some equipment installed on some vehicles and maintenance stuff. Oh, a dollar fifty.
Six thousand nine hundred eighty-five dollars. That was for the sheriff, uh, for EMS, there was, as.
Thirty.
It was twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars.
And, and that's for engineering relative to the new building that you're.
Right.
Building.
Yes.
Okay, uh, that was Doug Patterson for the record. Thanks.
Uh, there was one more, which is, it's confidential for the sheriff.
Oh, yeah, yeah, he does a lot of confidential stuff.
That's because he's keeping us safe, and I appreciate it.
But he doesn't tell me about any of it.
It's because he's doing a good job.
Because he told us not to. Okay. Any other discussion? Anybody? No hands up? Online? All right. The clerk, where are you at? Oh, what? Oh, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I'm motion passive. Now we'll hear from Michael Rosedale, our county clerk, who always spending money.
Good morning, everybody. Before I start, I recommended to the board that next week have this balance sheet or we have more room. Seems like we have a large dependence and, uh, just sort of bring you. Calvert. Um, before you, I have claims badge number eight in the amount of six hundred fifty-one thousand three hundred fourteen dollars and eighty-nine cents. And demand badge number eight, the amount of two hundred eight thousand three hundred seventy-four dollars and ten cents. Totaling eight hundred fifty-nine thousand six hundred eighty-eight dollars and ninety-nine cents. For your.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the payment of the F twenty-three claims and demands in batch number eight totaling. Eight million fifty-nine, six hundred and eighty, or eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand six hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ninety-nine cents, sorry.
A second to motion.
Doug Patterson for the record again. Um, so, um, demands are down this, this week, and, and, uh, averages below.
We'll try to bring it up for you.
Is there, what did we do right?
It's not a schedule. Demands aren't scheduled. They're.
I, I understand, but. You know, normally we get the medical payment things that usually runs the, so did we get less of those?
Uh, we had fewer of those. We had less fuel, fewer, uh, actual frequencies of fuel bills. There's been less piling going on in the last couple weeks, stuff like that.
Thank you.
Mr. Rose.
It, Mr. Chairman, uh, uh, clerk, um. Can, uh, did batches include any replenishment or retainer fees for, uh, any attorney, um, accounts, uh, whether it be devil or increasing more? Do, do batches contain any, any retainer amounts, uh, in, how do you say, replenishment of retainer amounts?
Not that I'm aware of, but we expect that after the meeting, um, in order.
Okay, I just thought you might know what's in.
My staff looks at the make sure that we have proper funding or proper accounts. They've been properly authorized, and they give. But we can go and check. Any else?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next I have EMS claims badge in the amount of thirty-two thousand two hundred seventy-two dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve payment of fiscal year twenty-three EMS claims in batch eight totaling thirty-two thousand two hundred seventy-two dollars thirty-seven cents.
I second.
Doug Patterson for the record, um, so the claims for EMS, um. By my recollection, that seems a bit above average. Um, is there something specific they were, they did that?
Um. I don't know, it would be the package.
There, there wasn't anything specific. When I looked at the bills, it just some, there's that up and down of EMS bills that seems to be there, but there wasn't anything specific.
Um. Yeah, okay, I'll have to recheck my average. Thanks.
I can get that for you by the end of this meeting. All right.
Some of it had to do with the other EMS. Like Clark's Board and. Our agreements with them. So. And none of those were really big items.
By the.
Yeah, under five. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Okay, Mike Rosedale, next, I have. Idaho statute. Thirty-four-three-oh-eight allows us to have a mail precinct only when we have a hundred and fewer registered voters or fewer for an election. We have, and we've done twice before, at least, we have a. Lakeland School District has a measure on ballot. They are primarily Cutney County School District. Lakeland School District has a measure on ballot. They are primarily Cutney County School District. We have a very few amount of registered voters in Bonner County, at the southern end of our county, in Clagstone. And Kelso that live there, we have twenty-nine voters in Kelso and hundred and twenty-four voters in Clagstone. And those are the only people voting in the March election. So we are, we have approval from the Secretary of State to have a mail-only ballot for those. We did this two years ago in March of twenty twenty-one, and we had a grand total of thirty-two people vote. And so it's far more financially efficient. With kind of resources to do, and we have approval, so I'm asking the commissioners to approve us to be mail-only. Precincts for Kelso and Clagstone for the March ballot only.
So you have item number three listed on this, is that meaning it's resolution two zero two three, number three?
I didn't put a resolution.
There's not a resolution number on it?
Yes, oh eight. With Bill Redd there, zero eight.
He said it's zero three.
Oh, zero three.
Yeah, zero three, thank you. Mr. Chairman, based on information before us, I move to approve resolution two zero two three zero three designating the Kelso and Clagston precincts as male. Ballot precincts for the March two thousand twenty-three election, the remainder of the two thousand twenty-three election cycle will revert back to a regular precinct.
A second to motion.
Uh, Doug Patterson for the record. Kelso is not on the. Agenda listed there, Carywood was Carywood and Clagstones, okay.
Know what, I think you're right.
Yeah.
Well, here is Carywood, I think the, I'm sorry, it is my, my mistake.
Okay, so, so.
It is Carywood.
Yeah. Yeah, on the agenda it shows it's Carywood, but it's actually Kelso.
Okay, thank you.
So is the.
It's Carywood, it is Carywood, I don't know how that got changed, but yes, on the actual resolution.
The resolution is correct, the agenda is not correct, okay.
Resolution is correct.
Okay. Alright, all in favor?
Anybody else have any comments?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Pass it. Thank you, Mr. Rosedale.
Alright.
Alright. Humanoid Resources.
Morning Commissioners, Cindy Binkert for the record, Human Resources. Uh, we have two items for today, the first one is recruitment request. Uh, we're requesting. Uh, approval from the board to move forward with filling the vacated position for the juvenile detention officer two. The supervisor. And that's it for staffing.
Is this a new position?
No.
So it's already been budgeted?
Right. It's, it's request to recruit for a vacation.
Thank you very much. Based on the information before us, I move to approve commencing with approval recruitment for the vacated position for juvenile detention tech two. Justice Services effective January twenty-three, twenty twenty-three.
I second the motion.
Public comment? Anybody want to apply? Alright. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Cindy.
Alright, the second item is a request for revision to our workplace conduct policy. Four hundred point four. Um, this has to do with the section regarding compliance regarding open meeting discussions. This policy was previously affected in October of two thousand seventeen. And the new language shall read, uh, for the county commissioners, Idaho code seventy-four dash two oh one. The people of the state of Idaho and creating the instruments of government that serve them do not yield to their sovereignty to the nation so created. Therefore, the legislature finds and declares that it is the policy of this state that the formation of public policy is public business. And shall not be conducted in secret. The BOCC has adopted the following policy to minimize the risk of secret deliberation. Occurring in agenda-setting process to maintain the sovereignty of the people of Bonner County as it relates to public business. The BOCC shall formulate agenda items in open meeting, public meeting, to the maximum extent possible to increase transparency. I.e. commissioners jointly researching, interacting, or discussing a potential specific business matter. The furtherance of this policy, the BOCC shall continually agendaize agenda-setting items for the discussion and decision in regular business meetings. Or in an open special meeting where necessary. Um, appointed department heads and liaison procedure. BOCC reporting, department head shall report to the full BOCC and shall not discuss. Issues that are or may be pending before the BOCC with more than one commissioner, except in a duly noticed public meeting. Serial meetings are defined as having the same or similar discussion with more than one county commissioner. And temporaries meetings are defined as existing or occurring in the same period of time. Both of these meetings should be, shall be prohibited. The responsibility and accountability, uh, each department head must execute a written agreement. And the liaison transparency policy, each commissioner shall provide reporting. Department head liaison update at each weekly open business meeting. For activities relating to all of the said commission liaisons. Um, this policy has been removed, removed, excuse me, reviewed by legal.
Ms. Binkert, uh, yesterday we had a meeting in regards to Department of Transportation and I brought in some concerns about due process and at that meeting. I'm, I'm very certain that what I heard was that traditionally that HR conducts a workshop before bringing something before the board and opening. I was just wondering, did I miss the workshop for this?
No, there was not a workshop for this.
I would entertain a motion to do that.
So we already had, because I worked on this, um, in the spirit of transparency and reducing the problem of treating it as. A single commissioner is in charge, we are a board of three. And so as people select, you know, I'm gonna speak to a commissioner. The community needs to know what those discussions are, if they are something that could be discussed in public. And so do the other commissioners, and the way in which that gets presented is during this meeting in the open public setting. To tell the public what we're working on and to also tell the other commissioners what's going on, because we shouldn't be blindsided. A single commissioner shouldn't have a scital of information that the other commissioners don't have, but in order to do that legally, it has to be done transparently. And so this was already a work, this was already a policy in place, it was just something that was updated, so it didn't require a workshop. When I looked at this, when I wrote the beginning, I wanted to focus on the sovereignty of the people. As people of Bonner County, we don't give that up. For local government, and in order to maintain that, we are supposed to as county government. Err in favor of open public meetings and dialogue. And that's what the purpose of this was, was to ensure that we are meeting the requirement of encouraging the people to participate in local government. And that will help remove the problem that can exist on a board of one person rising to the top versus people being treated as it is a board, you have. Equal say in these decisions and the community is aware, that was the purpose, and that is in line with the rule. A workshop isn't going to change the sovereignty of the people, and I will be transparent if that it's. Part of the shifting that is occurring in this building now where people are choosing, I want to talk to this person only. And favoring versus, we have a business to run and it's not a personal business, it is for the public, and in order to do that, we need to be transparent. In all the ways that we can, there are ways that we can't be transparent, but. We are more, we lean a little bit, in my opinion, too much on the let's go into. Individual people being in charge, I'm not the boss of an elected official, I cannot tell the sheriff, you have to come and have a meeting with me. It is right for us to have a dialogue in this setting that we're participating in. So that was the, the goal of this update.
Maybe, maybe I'm misunderstanding something.
I'll help.
Pardon me, Mr. Chairman.
I would entertain a motion to revisit this after. Next week's commissioner training down in Boise. Because there's some state statutes that are involved in all this that. They've become of interest to both of you that you will learn about. And I don't think there's a person in this room. That would be comfortable with the daily B. But not to the public, the conversation you had with your boss. Are y'all good with that?
That's not the same, like the liaison discussion.
Entertaining motion.
Okay, but if.
Revisit this and we'll have a discussion in executive session to discuss the statutes. Things relative to what you've got proposed here in your revision, that there are some. Might be some little glitches in.
So this went through legal.
Training done and then we'll move on from there.
This went through legal, and so that, that covers the concern about whether or not it's in line with. The laws that govern, and the law isn't going to change, and I would ask the, it's not, this isn't asking and.
Meeting to a point of order, thus the motion that I will entertain.
So that is not, no one is asking for that.
Point of order, Commissioner Williams?
Commissioner Bradshaw, I'm gonna be respectful of you regardless of what you do, but I'm going to tell you that. The issue is not asking for HR information to come out, it is when a department head, for example, says, we're gonna need a new snowblower and that might impact the agenda. Or our budget, our budget.
That's already being done.
So what will happen then is when that information.
Bone, do you have a motion one way or another, either one of it?
Chairman Bradshaw, I'm not prepared to make a motion out, and this isn't open for public comment.
Okay.
But, uh, Chairman Bradshaw, I'm not prepared, but I guess I, I have a understanding, I guess I'd like to ask legal. Because as I'm hearing Commissioner Williams, she's saying that. Uh, please correct me if my, if my misunderstanding is different. But that we can't tell electeds what to do, other electeds what to do, yeah. Before me, I have a policy that says each commissioner shall, now maybe I don't understand the meaning of the word. Shall. So, so that'd be, could you help illuminate that, please?
Well, this is a policy that will only impact you guys, the commissioners, so if you guys agree to it. All three of you guys agree to bind yourselves, then you would, it's okay to use a shall to bind yourselves. If you said, you know, Daryl shall show up here and tell you how things are going, then that would fall into the, I think that's. The scenario that you. So, yes, I think if you guys can adopt a policy that binds yourselves, does not other elected.
Well, according to, uh, to this one though, can this, so here, here's the other rulebook that I read occasionally. But to follow it, I'm trying to understand, so can this board? Bind future board, and can, are we bound by the actions of passports, so maybe I'm not still under.
Shall, so. You can adopt a policy, um, that binds the board. With the recognition that a future board or even the same board, um, has the authority to then revoke it. So, for example, you guys are, the, the policy that we have in place now, four hundred point four. Already kind of prohibits, the, the language is different than what Commissioner Williams has presented. Um, but it already prohibits these serial meetings, that's the policy that we already have in place. And so a previous board did adopt that, and so until you guys choose to either continue with it or revoke it. Then yes, you would be bound by that, that policy, um, but you have the right to revoke it, so in that sense. Will we follow it if you choose to? I mean, after following, going through this policy, um, as, as to the, the actual, the language of the proposed policy itself, I, I did send, you know, send you guys. My opinion on that, and, um. It does go beyond the baseline requirements in the Public Meetings Act, but those are. A threshold, they're a floor, not a ceiling. And so the, the language that we already have in place does go beyond the baseline. Um, for example, these serial meetings, um, the, the Public Records Act almost be, actually, the definition of a meeting. When more than one of you guys is present, right, has to be two of the governing board, so. If a department head wants to go talk to each individual elected commissioner, one at a time. Uh, it might violate maybe the spirit of the Open Meetings Act, but not the letter of it. That's why we already have a policy prohibiting it, so just so you guys in the public are aware. Proposal is to go above and beyond the Records Act, doesn't, there's nothing stopping you guys from doing that, you guys can do that.
Thank you.
There, clear as mud today.
Uh. As I said, I've got to spend more time with lawyers lately, and, um, yeah, so it's clear as mud, thank you. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I can make a comment, uh, there's distinct responsibility, right? Power, I'm part of the executive branch, I'm a legislator, that's the commissioner, that's why. Because you are a legislative one. And that's why this one applies to me.
We can ask him to do something, but he don't have.
He can say no.
He can't.
I'm pretty sure that Title thirty-one, though, also clearly delineates that commissioners. Aren't executive branch of the county.
Is actually.
We're actually, it's all three.
Where they have, they, they are legislative when they make ordinances, they're executive in some fashion, and also quasi judicial when they sit in land. So you guys wear a bunch of weird hats, different hats.
Which is why transparency would be good.
And complying with the constitution is also good. Oh.
And we'll do all of those and ensure the sovereignty of the people that we represent.
Yes, ma'am.
But.
We're, we're. Chairman, are we in public comment or there's no motion on the floor, so we're still.
Yeah, so I'd entertain a motion to table this till after Boise. And then we'll. Discuss it with HR in executive session. And save the taxpayers a lot of boring time here in the Tuesday morning business meeting.
Does this fall by for executive session? Is this a topic that goes in executive session just because there's a disagreement, or is this the point of open public discussion?
So, one of the. One of the reasons we can go into executive session is for the receipt of otherwise confidential information, so I've already written you guys. Attorney-client privileged document explaining the legality of this policy. You wanted to go into executive session to discuss that. Um, that's one of the ways we can, or you can choose not to, you can have the discussion publicly too. So remember, executive session is only an option. Sometimes it's, it's almost a necessity, sometimes it is, you have to make those decisions, which kind of have a need to.
Well, I would entertain a motion that we do this policy like we do every other policy that comes before the board. And it's done before it gets right here.
Well, I'm not gonna vote to secret this, so you'll have to look to Luke to second that, because I'm not going to.
I wasn't aware, Commissioner Williams, that this was in secret, I mean, as I look out at a number of plaid shirts and I recognize that maybe I forgot part of the uniform of the day. That this has been an open meeting, but I appreciate that, that comment.
Asking for it to go into secret, that's.
So I'd entertain a motion to table this. I don't think that's what was said, however. Uh. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to table this policy until we actually go through the traditional procedure. As brought forth by Human Resources yesterday. With a public workshop.
I would step down from the chair and second that. Public comment?
Kristen Dodd, for the record, my question, you mentioned that there were some statutes that. That the, the other commissioners might be learning about that would perhaps conflict with this policy. I'm curious, can you share that with us right now, with those, with that statute is that is in conflict with this policy?
That would be a legal thing, I don't have the statute in front of me. On my desk in there, but. Uh. Next week, we go to commissioner training down in Boise. They will learn a lot of procedural things, they'll learn a lot of state laws and stuff that applies to commissioners, that what you can do, what you can't do, how you do it. And I would suggest that we do that before we actually do things. Like this, out of the normal order that we do things like this.
Okay, and then this is gonna be discussed.
We have a process of doing this, that, that process has been skipped.
Okay, but then this will be discussed in public after, making all of the things that you want to learn?
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Bowman. Good morning, can you hear me? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, couple of things, Cindy, unfortunately, I. I was unable to catch anything that you said, uh, because of probably the position of the mic, uh, same thing. With everybody who's been up there so far, uh. So is this policy revision written somewhere where we could get access to it online or get an email to us, because I have no idea what was said. In that, I, so that's one, uh, Bill Wilson, you are. Wonderfully employing your technique learned from Lewis Marshall to lean away from the mic when you speak, so that you can't be held accountable.
I'm gonna sit right up here, okay, I apologize.
I appreciate it, it's a regular thing, so you have a habit when you get on the mic that you lean away from it, so I'd like to call your attention to that. And then the last thing I have is, it is utterly bizarre to me that this discussion would take place in executive. it is utterly bizarre to me that this discussion would take place in executive session. I mean, you've got, Chairman Bradshaw, when you were signed, sworn in, you talked about wanting to be lawful rather than legal and all of you have talked about transparency. So, you know, I, again, I missed some of it, but we're talking about open meetings and to discuss that in executive session is insane. So that's all I have.
Thanks, Dave.
Every policy change that has came before the board in the last four years has been discussed in executive session because that's a time when the three commissioners can actually have a conversation on an item that's gonna be voted on. And so after that executive session, that policy change or policy adaptation would either be shot down or moved forward. When it's moved forward, then it is on the agenda and it is made public at that point. So transparency is a hundred percent. And so we're not, I'm not willing to change that. If the two decide that they would like to change that process, then it will be changed.
Well, I guess I would ask, why, why is it, why do you feel the need to do that in secret? Especially regarding open meeting policy, especially that.
Because the three of us can't have a conversation in an open meeting about things we're gonna vote on later.
I could not disagree more. You should be having those conversations.
The law doesn't say I am using open meeting to have a conversation freely. It's very clear on the rules. So Idaho Code seventy-four two oh six tells you executive session is for hiring personnel issues, real property, records exempt, trade or commerce litigation, HR risk management for claims.
And what's the required posted time for us to have a conversation in a public workshop? And that did not happen. So that pretty much nullifies that, doesn't it?
I don't know. It seems to me like we're talking about personnel issues to be conducted in private and secret. That would be regarding issues with a particular personnel or behavioral issue or disciplinary. But when you're talking about the broad policy for all employees of the county, that's a whole, I think you gotta take, put it in context of what those words are supposed to mean in the, in the code, in the statute.
Um, thank you. The, the time you can go into executive session is when you're talking about something expressly narrowly defined by statute. Every other instance needs to be public, a public meeting. If you then leave that narrowly defined scope of statute, you need to immediately go back to a public meeting. Uh, executive session is not meant to talk about anything you want to talk about. It's meant to talk about that issue that's narrowly defined by statute.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosedale.
That narrowly defined, uh, subject matter would include prospective policy changes and stuff like that.
To.
All right, Mr. Rose.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry. I thought I was running this meeting. I thought that's chairman.
That's what I thought.
I asked Mr. Rosedale a question. Would that include policy changes that are specified and posted that we're going into executive session?
If it deals with ongoing litigation, yes. If it doesn't, no. If it deals with ongoing personnel issues by name, yes. If it doesn't, no. If it has to, if it has to follow that. And Bill Wilson has advised you, I mean, it's a very narrowly construed thing. I mean, it's not, it's not a razor sharp line.
I got you, Dave. All right. Doctor Wilson. Again, all right. So again, and Mike's right, the statutes say that the executive session should be narrowly tailored and not, and not be expansive. So i- in this case, the only realistic way that I could see this discussed in executive session would be um, the portion that talks about discussion of exempt records. One of those exempt records are those things that I create for you that attorney, are attorney client privileged. So I have given you an opinion in writing. If you want to ask questions about that, or you want to have a full discussion about my opinions that I've given to you in executive session, you can choose to do that if you, after a roll call vote, if two out of the three of you guys want to do that. Um, again, that's, that's your privilege to hold or wave. So if, if you didn't think that it was necessary to go into executive session to receive my advice or to have that discussion, you could just have it in public meeting too. So that's, that's the decision that we'll have, we'll face if you guys were to, to table this to a subsequent meeting. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, um, I'd like to, uh, how do we say, say I agree with Dave Bowman, uh, Clerk Rosedale, um, and mostly with, uh, Tony Wilson. Um, the methods of public business are expressly stated in the, in the code to age secrecy. Um, again, the middle of the year is where you need to be in the rest of the business is the public's business. And, um, we attempt to shield the public from the business by making it executive session is a misuse of the executive session. And, um, I'll go back and say further that, you know, if Dave Bowman can't hear what's going on, this meeting is no void. If you offer a, uh, an audio, video version, everybody has to be able to hear and see and participate. And if he can't, you entered into that morbid area. Um, so I wouldn't be showing the board to think very closely about what they wish to make public and which they wish to make private. And my public comment goes to that same principle, except from the staff level. My presentation of public comment refers to the public's level. And so, um, this, even though it was done, and we're gonna do things the way we've always done them is why people get thrown out of office.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call the question.
Okay.
So what that does is we have a motion in a second and it's to vote so that we can carry on. And I believe that there was a ten o'clock meeting scheduled. We have executive session. As a member of the executive officer of the county, I believe that there was a motion on the floor and you stepped down from the chair to second it. I'd like to call the question to get both out so we can continue with the.
The motion was to, uh, table this until after Boise, then we'll discuss it. And it'll get on the agenda and look forward.
Mr. Chairman, my motion was to go through the procedure as is traditional within this county to have a workshop and to bring it back in public where we can address it in a public setting. Mr. Chairman, yes, sir.
Do we have a second? In that case, I will step down from the chair and second that. Motion passes off.
Vote.
Roll call vote.
Yes.
No. I can request roll call vote at any time.
But you can call for it.
My hand has not come down.
Got it. We.
Did you put it down?
No. I did at one point, but I put it back up.
Read out, we can hear you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I tried to unmute so that y'all knew that my hand had been up for a long time. Um, that's okay. I just want to say that, um, with the people that I have been in touch with, they've all been offended at everything going into executive session. Even though somebody says that it's always been done this way for four years, it's not always been done this way all the time. And I would like to see which meeting that they had a resolution to make all this stuff go into executive session in the first place. Um, having said that, I do agree with Dave Bowman and, um, a few other speakers. And thank you, Bill, for sitting up and so we can hear you now. I appreciate that. And that's all I've got.
All right. Thanks, Sherry. All right. Motion passes to get tabled. Okay. Nope, it's done. Well, no, it's not on that. It's on what David said.
Well.
Okay, go ahead.
Turn to Mr. Wilson by recording.
It's not a question and answer. Go ahead.
It's really up to the chairman to decide if he wants to allow public comment. Whether or not it tracks.
Allow this last one.
My name is Wayne Martin, for the record. In my name, take sorry. Uh, with these meetings, most of the time I don't make it in, I have to zoom. And a lot of the times, I would say the majority of the time, it is hard to hear what's being said, whether it's mic placement, number of mics or whatever, whether it's a person at the podium or whatever. But I'm trying to confirm what Dave said is, yeah, lots of times you can't hear. And I don't know if there's a way of being able to get ahold of you folks, whomever, to say, hey, you know, speak louder or be closer to the mic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Road and Bridge.
Hi, Matt. So can you hear me on the mic? At this distance or do we need to make an adjustment?
Perfect.
All right. Matt Mulder, Staff Engineer for the Road and Bridge Department, for the record. First item on the agenda today is the Rocky Point Road acceptance into the county maintenance. Bonner County Board entered into a memorandum of agreement on November twenty-fourth in twenty twenty with Lowell Fennick and the Idaho State Board of Land Commissioners acting through their administrative state agency, the Idaho Department of Lands. And in that agreement, um, we had agreed to accept maintenance to a portion of Rocky Point Road once the road was constructed and accepted and signed off by IDL. And the road has been constructed and we have a letter in our possession signing off on the construction by IDL. The easements for that road have been transferred to the county as per other items in the agreement. And so everything has been, uh, completed. And it is before the board today to formally accept this road into the county maintenance system.
I move to approve this purchase agreement for parcel number two in the, am I on the wrong one?
Yep.
Or is it yours?
Yeah, just a comment. I'm not a road builder, but we've been briefed on some of this stuff and our Road and Bridge Department took a pretty difficult task. And they saved the taxpayer dollars and I, I am appreciative of that because it sounds pretty complicated. I haven't driven a lot of roads and I, anybody who's driven roads in Northern Idaho knows, those that, all roads are not created equal. I just want to acknowledge the work that, uh, the engineers and the crews did. Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve the acceptance of Rocky Point Road into the Bonner County Maintenance System to be maintained by Bonner County Road and Bridge.
It's like information.
All right. Public comment? Discussion? All in favor? All right, motion passes. All right, number two.
Every year, uh, the Road and Bridge Department puts out to a public bidding procedure for procurement of rock crushing in each of our three road districts. And this year is no different. So we are requesting today the board's approval to approve this, uh, notice of advertisements for rock crushing in districts one, two, and three. We use this rock for, you know, base rock for road construction, recorder minus top course, the rock chips for, uh, doing our road chip seals, sand for putting down in, in winter and riprap and all sorts of manner. So it's a massive quantity of rock that we order every year.
All right, I move to approve the notice of advertisement for rock crushing in districts one, two, and three.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion? Done. And all in favor?
Aye.
And for the third item, I would like to withdraw that from the agenda.
We have another eye?
Aye.
Aye. Eye motion passes. Number three.
Third item I would like to withdraw from the agenda at this time. We have a second purchase agreement that has been received. We're gonna bring both of those back to you in a couple of weeks at the same time. Okay, thank you.
Hey, Sheriff's Office.
So I was wondering. The, when you speak, I speak, you speak. It's opposite on Monday. It's okay. That's what was confusing.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, let me get you for the record. Uh, we tend with the Sheriff's Office, uh, uh, before this one, I bring a, uh, request to approve a Idaho Department of Parks and Recreation, uh, grant request uh, seeking fifteen thousand dollars from the Off-Road Motor Vehicle Fund to support, uh, education enforcement activities, uh, specifically, uh, related to, uh, off-highway vehicles and snowmobiles. Uh, the Sheriff's Office would like to provide, um, education and uh, enforcement, uh, of these, uh, activities throughout the county in an effort to, uh, address the growing number of, uh, vehicles that we're seeing out on the, uh, the trails as well as a, a number of fatalities that we've had in the last couple of years. The grant request is for fifteen thousand dollars with a, uh, five thousand dollar county match and asking for approval of the, uh, grant plus the, uh, approval to sign the commitment letter for five thousand dollars.
I'm gonna, I'm sorry. I was gonna apologize for the confusion. I just realized that mine is office, my agenda says I'm the opposite speaker of, that's where there's some confusion on my end. Um, so I move that we approve the, Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve the ORMV grant application in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars with a county match of five thousand and authorize the chairman to sign the letter of commitment.
I'll second the motion.
Uh, discussion? Absolutely, you can make that match for us.
I wish I could. Does the, uh, request include the housing, something. With their recreational vehicles as they can now.
So the, uh, the grant is designed to us to do many things, one of which is to assist in the enforcement of uh, state and county regulations related to off-highway vehicles, uh, whether they be snowmobiles or off-highway vehicles. So, uh, it would allow us to enforce any regulations, which we already could. This, uh, this is primarily to allow us to try to do more educational classes and then to get out in the field and, and, and talk to people and, uh, and promote safety. And of course, you know, take enforcement action when it's appropriate.
Yeah, um, you're asking for fifteen thousand, if I remember right, and, um, is this the same agenda item that says five thousand?
No, it's, it's fifteen thousand dollar grant with a five thousand dollar match.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. All right, we had first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Deputy. Hi, Kevin.
Morning.
Kevin Rothenberger, County Assistance Resolution before you this morning, Commissioners, as per the destruction of indigent office records. These are classified as semi-permanent records. They have met their five-year limit and they can now be disposed of.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-three dash zero four for the approval of the destruction of indigent assistance office records.
I second the motion.
All right, we got a first and second discussion. It's a time-based thing.
And those, uh, is a trustee of the Indian River Health District, this would, how do we say, fall into our area as well. Um, I've made direct requests for this stuff in the past, uh, and have been denied. Um, so my question would be if for destroying records, um, they go back so many years, I'm not sure where that point is. And, um, there is the potentiality that, um, certain parties who have been giving services, hospital bills paid for. there's the potentiality that, um, certain parties who have been given services in hospital bills being for. Something goes against the property, I should destroy those records somehow.
All of these are closed cases. They are not active. Leans have already been released. They have been closed for five years, though there's nothing there to look at.
Thank you. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Aye. All right. Pete.
Hey, can I see the Pete one? That one I don't have.
The Pete one?
Yeah. Nick, can I see your agenda?
Morning Commissioners, morning everyone.
We have the wrong.
Pete Hughes, Recreation Manager, for the record, and I have one item for consideration this morning in regards to the IDPR RV grant. Uh, attached is the grant application and letter of commitment for the Idaho Department of Parks and Recreation Recreational Vehicle Fund. A side note, there was a typo made on that first sentence. I gave, uh, Jesse the correct copy for uh, the chair to sign if the board votes to do so. Uh, the grant proposal is for a total of thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars. IDPR contribution would be thirty thousand, six hundred dollars. With Bonner County contributing three thousand, three hundred dollars in cash match and three thousand, eight hundred dollars of in-kind contribution, which exceeds the required five percent match. The grant will be used to replace all picnic tables, benches, concrete pads and fencing within the day use area of the Garfield Bay Campground Park. Signing this letter would confirm Bonner County's application submittal and commitment in providing matching funds. Uh, so to bring the board up to speed, uh, specifically there'd be ten ADA um, picnic tables with concrete pads, six benches and six hundred and seventy feet of post and rail fencing. Also, the, the Garfield property is a total of sixty-seven point eight nine acres, approximately sixty acres would be considered the campground. Two acres boat launch and two and a half acres makes up the day use park, uh, portion of the, the property. Uh, over the last few years, we put a ton of work into the campground. Um, so this year we'll be focusing on the park and potentially next year be, uh, focusing on the, the launch area. Last year at this time, the board approved a fee increase in the campground. Uh, and my goal was to, uh, take those fees and put them directly back into the property. Uh, last year we saw a approximately seventy-five hundred dollar increase in, in, uh, incoming fees. So the justification for, uh, spending these match funds will come out of the, the specific Garfield facilities line item oh three oh eighty-eight eleven.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve the grant application and sign the letter of commitment to the Idaho Department of Parks and Recreation. RV fund requiring Bonner County to provide a match of three thousand, three hundred dollars cash and a three thousand, eight hundred of in-kind contribution.
Second to motion.
All right, we got a first and second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Thank you.
BLT.
I live right there.
Good morning, Jesse Reimboldt, for the record. Um, every year the Commissioner's Office, uh, receives a request from the Coolin Civic Organization. And they ask permission to conduct a parade. This parade will be held on May twenty-seventh and it's in conjunction with the annual Priest Lake Spring Festival. Um, I know that they work closely with the Sheriff's Office to ensure traffic safety, um, during this event. And I think that their request is more of a courtesy, um, to our office, but either way, this is an annual item that they receive. So they're requesting permission to hold their parade.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve the letter to the Coolin Civic Organization, granting them permission to hold a parade on May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three in conjunction with the annual Priest Lake Spring Festival.
I second the motion.
Discussion? Comment, Matt Mulder.
I'll just, Matt Mulder, Staff Engineer for the Road and Bridge Department. I'll just add that they also obtain an encroachment permit for the parade from our department, as does any organization who's going to be holding a, a race or a parade or anything that's taking onto the public roads. We make sure that they have their insurance and traffic control and stuff in place.
Thank you. The others? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. It is.
Can I update what the claims for the EMS was?
Yes, you may. Name for direct.
It was for the monthly contract payments, uh, outlier EMS stations, rent and the billing services and medical supplies. It was the thirty-two thousand. Thank you.
Thank you. It is ten after ten. We will take a five-minute recess and then we will go into executive session.
Take a motion. Think that's what people, you're going to.
Well, we don't need a motion to recess.
No, but it's sad. Yeah, the term recess.